Welcome to the annual meeting of the Mount Vernon City School District. This is a public meeting to tell the public about the budget. Our budget for 2022, 2023 is $266,743,231. It represents a tax increase of one-half percent, or about $46.20 for the average household assessed at $10,000. We will take any questions now from the public.
I have a question.
Mr. Keller.
One of the last Budget Committee meetings, you handed out a list of the students and which schools they were at, and my recollection, I have it here someplace, was 6931. And then we added 420, 320 for Ammanee and 100 for all the other charter schools that Mount Vernon students are going to. So we get up to 7351. And I used that number when I spoke before the board a few weeks ago to say that it was almost 36,000 per student, 266.7 divided by 7351. When I was on the website today, I saw 7950. So my question is, how do we get from basically 7351 to 7950?
Mr. Keller, the number is anticipated number for September of 2022. It has nothing to do with the current now. We're talking about anticipated new registration of people coming in to the community that we expected to be that high by September 1st of next year. That was, if you look at that, it referred to 2022, 2023, "expected" was the word that was there at the top of the title.
Oh, I have to look again. That's quite an increase. That's about 600 over 7350, which-
The increase is always very large at that time of year. Sometimes it disappears, sometimes it doesn't. This was expected or anticipated, Mr. Keller.
And I know you included in the budget 1.7 million for the new charter school. Was that about 100 students or 110, something like that?
They're permitted to have 112 students in their first year. And that could be anywhere between 18 and $30,000, depending upon services that the children need.
And that was included in that 7950, the expected enrollment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you add that and so, all right. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned. Welcome to the May 4th Mount Vernon Board of Education meeting. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam President, the first order of business is to appoint me, Ken Silver, as Clerk Pro Tem. So we need-
Do we need a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
We don't-
Aye.
We're not going to discuss it. What are his qualifications?
Yeah, let's see the rest.
Aye.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thank you. So I need to take the roll?
Yes, please.
Trustee Saunders?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell?
Here.
Trust- I just marked you absent. Trustee McOwen?
Trustee Miller?
Here.
Trustee Munoz Patterson?
Present.
Trustee Red?
Present.
Trustee Sorensen?
That's Camilo Sorensen, present.
Trustee Turnquist?
Present.
Trustee White?
Present.
We don't have anything from the superintendent.
Yes, the superintendent report.
So you're going to do the-
Don't communicate.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're going to go into communication from the public right now?
The Mount Vernon Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children. And accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of board policy. A speaker must register in advance by no later than four o'clock the day of the meeting by contacting district clerk in person or by phone. The board welcomes all respectful comment, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon education official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. Up to one minute additional may be used if the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remark. Our first speaker is Nadine Bailey.
So I'm here to speak regarding a safety concern for my daughter. So basically, the concern is that with bus transportation, I contacted, I attempted to reach the Bus Dispatch, letting her know that I was running behind in traffic. I couldn't get anyone on the phone. So I emailed Bus Transportation, asking her to, related message to the bus driver, to say, you know, I'm a few blocks away, please ask him to give me a moment or whatever, right? So when I arrived to my home, the bus driver was there, but apparently, I don't know, he didn't see me, he pulls off. And I want to say later, the, excuse me, the bus supervisor, I contacted him, the bus supervisor, letting him know my concern, you know, because the bus driver was given an instruction to drive my daughter back home when he was only one block away from my house, okay? Finally, I get the bus, the transportation, the representative from the Board of Education, she contacted me to say, Ms. Bailey, the bus driver is bringing your child back home. But this was like a whole, I don't know, maybe 45 minutes. What happened was, the bus driver took my daughter to the base. That's a safety concern because there's a protocol that if for whatever reason you can't contact the adult, the parent, you bring the child to the Board of Education or back to the school. The bus driver brings her to the base, my child is a child with special needs, even if she wasn't, but more so because she is, she's not very verbal, she's put in a vulnerable situation to bring her to the base. You know, I don't know who, you know, when bus drivers go to the base, usually they're preparing to go home. From what I understand, usually bus drivers drop the bus monitor off at the stop, you know, the corner or wherever, and then goes back to the base. So my concern is a safety concern. After speaking to the supervisor from the bus company, he told me, you know, first I asked him, what's the consequence for this? Because it should be dealt with. So he tells me, well, we can't tell you how we deal with our employees or what have you, but that's really, my concern, like I said, is a safety concern. And I'm hoping that in my speaking, that it will be dealt with. I don't know how it was dealt with. I was told that we can't tell you what was done. I'm saying, okay, I'm a parent, I've been driving my daughter to school and home since the incident. Because I don't, my daughter, she's not very verbal, but she's smart, you know, and her response to the situation when she got home, you know, she began crying, falling to the ground, you know, she's scared because she's in unfamiliar area, which should not happen. So, I mean, I also wanted to ask about cameras. When I asked about the cameras on the bus, the supervisor of the bus company tells me, all the buses don't have cameras. So I'm saying, they should, you know? So that's the other thing I wanted to mention was the importance of having cameras on all the buses for the safety of our children. God forbid something were to happen, the cameras are there, and you know, things can be verified. So I'm just asking that, you know, since I wasn't told how this employee was dealt with, I'm asking that, you know, all bus drivers are, you know, told to follow protocol, which is if the parent is not home, they can't reach them or what have you, to make sure they bring the child to the Board of Education or to the school, not to the base. Because that's unsafe for children. And so that's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Mr. Silver, do you have anything to respond?
No, I don't think so. Next speaker is Ryan Brown.
Ms. Brown? She's coming.
Oh, I didn't know that's-
Rayanne.
Rayanne, okay. I'll say his nickname is Ryan.
Hello. Good evening. Today I will be talking about how accommodating religious people by enforcing like a day off from school. I think that that was a good idea. Just a while ago on Monday, we took the day off from school to celebrate Eid. I think that was a great idea because this is able, this allows Muslim kids to be able to enjoy the day with their family and to be able to pray and to be able to embrace the individualism, not by going to school and taking a break off from school because of their religion. I think that it's a good day that we all take the break, the day off, to try and to accommodate for people. Because at the end of the day, religion is also important in other people's daily lives because it makes them, actually, it's their way of life, basically. They go by the routine, the rituals. And I believe that, well, in my opinion, that taking the day off from school to accommodate people for their religious actions is really beneficial to them. And I think that this should have been, like, this should have been a thing before. It shouldn't have been like, starting now. Because at the end of the day, previously, kids had to take the day off from school, receiving absences, and not being able to enjoy the religion worrying about school. And I think that this was a good approach to start allowing kids to be able to go and enjoy their religion and being able to say, oh, I don't have to worry about school anymore. I just have to take the day, do what I have to do, and go to school tomorrow and not being a problem. Because our attendance is important in school. It's not like we come in and, you know, stuff like that. So I think that it was a good approach to change that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Sergio Rodriguez.
Hi, good evening. Actually, the item that I was going to discuss with the board was resolved earlier today. So I'm just here to thank the Facilities Department for finding the answers, and at this time I'll just yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bishop Evers.
Good afternoon to the board members. I don't often come unless I have something to say. There's some people want to say something, some people have something to say. And I have something to say. First of all, I was perusing my social media today, and I recognize that the board is about to make a tremendous, I assume, appointment of the person who will be responsible to educate our children. I want to endorse, and I think that this board have made, if it is true, the right decision of choosing Ms. Dr. B., which we called her, a person who was passed over the last time, but stayed in our community and worked with us and have brought in millions and millions of dollars and have given tremendous initiative. I think it should be unanimous vote. I don't think there should be no dissent. However, the board member, all board members have the right to vote their own conscience and what they know. But based upon what I do know, and it's very limited, she has emerged as one of the favored daughters of our city, and we are grateful for that. And I want to commend this board if that's the action that you take. However, there are three things I want her and this new administration to focus on. First of all is safety in our schools, particularly the high school there on California Avenue. More emphasis needs to be placed on the safety of our children. There need to be follow-up, not just during the time the kids are in school, but also when the kids leave from school headed home. There need to be more conscientious about safety. The next thing is her initiative, her baby, which is universal pre-K. I need you all to revisit the three-year-old program. We must reinstate that. That was a tremendous program to get our children a head start. And I pray that this new administration will find, and this board will find the money. Our children are at a great disadvantage. Our parents are at a great disadvantage, and they need care. So the universal pre-K program is very important, and I want to celebrate Dr. White, who is doing a fantastic job in administering the four-year-old program. And please, I ask that you continue with her part of your administration. Finally, I want to say, continuity, continuity, continuity is very important. We are on a trajectory of upward. We don't need to go backwards. So I believe this move will continue to continue. And Dr. Gorman, thank you for your help, as you have helped us to provide success in the life of our community. Continuity is so important. So I want to commend this board and say to this board, whatever you do, please make sure that we have continuity in the life of our school. We don't need no disruption. We need continuity, continuity, continuity. Thank you for this time.
That was our final speaker.
That concludes public comment. So we're going to go right on to the superintendent's report.
Under the superintendent report this afternoon, this evening. I just left my folder. Before I introduce my speakers or presenters for this afternoon, for this evening, I just want to say to Ms. Bailey, is she here? Okay. All right. That I am definitely going to look into the matter or the concern that you presented, and I will sure get to the bottom of it if she's here. Now, this evening, we have two sets, three sets of presenters. You have security, presenters on security, presenters on special ed, new programs in special ed, and also a presenter on audit, 2018 audit. Now, the first one is safety and security. And thank you, Archbishop Edwards? He left? Okay. Because he's now Archbishop, so now I wanted to congratulate him on that too. And we are going to proceed right into security. Now, the Mount Vernon City School District seeks to evaluate and strengthen the safety and security of its facilities, emergency plans, and the overall level of emergency preparedness and the management of our schools. We take emergency preparedness seriously and wishes to take proactive steps to ensure the safety of the entire school population. This evening, we have two companies here with us, Altaris and Briga Security Services. Both companies will work together to ensure that all levels of security is covered in our schools. We have Mr. John Laplaca from Altaris and Peter Moreno from Briga. These gentlemen came highly recommended. They worked in several of our school districts and has done a wonderful job. They will be working with our safety officers in many different areas. Secondly, we have with us Dr. Joyce Corpus, our very own, and Glenn De Sanchez, doing a presentation on the two new programs that we are bringing to the district, Seed and Focus. And the third presentation will be done by Mr. Silver on the 2018 audit. So I'm asking everybody to be here with us this afternoon and this evening, and then Mr. Silver will be the shortest one. So without further ado-
You heard it first.
Yes, I kept him for the last for a reason. Okay. So with further ado, I'm going to invite Mr. John Laplaca from Altaris to come in and present to us about how he's going to keep us safe.
Thank you, doctor. A pleasure to be here this evening, and thank you for the invitation to speak with the board. John Laplaca from Altaris Consulting Group. Altaris is a K-12 consultancy that works primarily in safety, security, and emergency management. Currently, right now, we're working with upwards of about 75 school districts here in New York. We are based here in Westchester County, so as you might imagine, most of our work is in our backyard. However, we work across the country as well. We're working with dozens of districts here in Lower Westchester, including the cities of White Plains and New Rochelle, as well as many other smaller districts. Just to talk briefly about the mechanism, how we work with schools. In the wake of a critical incident, some very difficult questions get asked of school district administrators as far as what was done to prevent the incident from happening, whenever you can do so. And when you can't prevent something from happening, what mechanisms are in place to respond effectively and ultimately recover from that? Unfortunately, if you can't respond to those inquiries with confidence and a thorough, comprehensive program, you're in a difficult situation. So what our firm does in a systematic approach is to help the districts to develop the capability to prevent these incidents from happening whenever possible, and to work with staff to develop their mechanism and their confidence and capability to respond effectively. Briefly, as far as how we work with schools, is the first step in the process is an assessment process. It is not an audit, which has a kind of a negative connotation to it. It's not an IRS audit, which is typically painful. This is to be looked at as a very positive approach and a positive mechanism. When we come into a district to look comprehensively at all the systems that are in place, we're going to be reinforcing many of the things that you're doing correctly, and I'm sure there are plenty of them, and also looking for improvement opportunities, things where we can get better to implement best practices going forward. And some of those things are going to be short-term, and some of those things are going to be longer-term, looking, you know, forward as far as, you know, months and years down the line. One thing that we always get asked about is, what is the cost that's involved with improvement opportunities? Are you going to be coming into a school district and asking us to spend hundreds or even millions of dollars on improvement opportunities? At the outset, I should say that Altaris doesn't sell any products. So we're not going to come into a school district, nor do we have backend on products as well. So we're not going to come into a school district and say, you need a piece of technology, let's say, and then say, oh, by the way, here's our line of cameras. We don't do that. In fact, we are the no-loaded mutual funds, as I like to say, of safety consulting. You're paying us at the outset for our advice. We're going to advocate for the district to protect your investment going forward. And in many cases, there are lots of things out there, I'm sure many of you are aware of, that make people feel safer, but don't actually make you safer. So we're looking at those things to make sure that we're putting mechanisms in place, saving money where we can, whether you move that money towards other safety initiatives or spend it on things like mental health and education, which are equally important. We want to make sure that we look at those things and protect the district's interest in those areas. So during the assessment process, and I should say also that many of the best investments you're going to make cost nothing at all. They are policies and procedure changes, they are training, they are mental health pieces on there, they are outreach to the community, things that cost nothing at all where you're going to get probably the best return on investment rather than big expenditures going forward. Not to say that there aren't expenditures, but we'll look at those as well. Once we actually do our assessment of the district, and we curate all those things, a highly digestible report, then we work with the district to get conceptual buy-in on those things, determine what the district feels as though is appropriate, what is not right for Mount Vernon, and I will tell you, probably 95% of the things that we're going to recommend to the district, you'll say, absolutely makes perfect sense. And then there's that 5% that you may say, it's not right for our community. And that's perfectly fine as well. Community, community, there's different tolerance on things that they want to put into place. From there, unlike a typical consultancy, we don't come into districts and provide you with simply a punch list and say, here you go. Because ultimately, many of the administrators in the district simply don't have the time or the expertise to manage these critical functions. So we're here to improve your condition, which means that we're going to work with you, do the heavy lifting whenever possible, to improve the district's condition and move that ball down the field, as we like to say. Because if we, if we're simply just telling you all the things you need to do, creating more work, that's not going to make Mount Vernon safer and more prepared. So it's our responsibility to work to get those things done, and then work with you to get the last 10% that we need, which is typically conceptual buy-in, approvals, because we work very transparently with districts going forward. From there, we're going to be doing complete revisions of your emergency plans to make sure they're actionable, fully compliant. For those of you that are involved with safety and security in your district, you know that there are just dozens upon dozens of rules, regulations, and moving parts that are constantly changing at the state level. It's very difficult for a district to stay in compliance with all these things. That's our job to make sure that we keep you wholly in compliant, to keep you apprised of all the changes going forward, best practices and things that are going on both here in New York as well as nationwide as well. And we're going to keep an eye on that. As well as training, role-specific training, which means that we're going to be working with students, staff, even the community, as far as outreach programs. A word on the community, they play a big part in safety and security in your district, a big part. When we talk about prevention, some of the, we really want to be in a situation where we prevent these bad things from happening. And part of that is it's a partnership with the district, community members, staff, students, everyone, together working closely. We know that in events that have happened all across this country, someone always knew something about what was going to happen, but either failed to recognize the importance of letting someone know about that, or simply just didn't want to get involved because of the perception that they might be the rat, as we like to call it. So in those particular cases, we want to break down those barriers with the community and the students and everyone that's involved to make sure that they're aware of the fact of how important is the mechanism, how to report things going forward, and to make sure that in fact, they get involved in this process so that we can get and mitigate these problems before they turn into critical events going forward. So there's a lot that's involved to it. As we move along in the process, again, we're going to be project managing, which is a big piece of what we do going forward, and make sure that these things, we hold people accountable, we hold vendors accountable for things, and again, do that heavy lifting on part of, you know, on the part of the district to get things into place. We've got a tremendous track record here in the area. We really do not market our business. We're all word of mouth when it comes to referrals from district to district going forward. And again, we tailor our approach to what the district wants for it. We don't do culture and climate work, so we stay in our lane as far as safety, security, and emergency management. So we're not doing culture and climate work in the district. We do work with culture and climate professionals to make sure that those things are optimized going forward. We work with other vendors, such as Mr. Moreno's firm. As far as staffing, we don't provide security guard staffing. We stay in our lane, and again, we advocate for the district to make sure that you're making the appropriate investments, conserve whenever possible, and making sure that you have the best mechanisms in place, you know, going forward and best practices. So I don't want to talk too long, because I know you have a long agenda, but did anybody have any questions or?
I have a question.
Sure.
So you do train, you train the existing staff?
Correct.
And so do you also manage them for a period of time? Or do you just train them? In other words, you said you're there, you're kind of, you're boots on the ground in terms of implementation. Does that, when you're implementing, does that involve management of our employees?
So that's a great question. So ultimately, what happens is that we do have role-specific training, which means that we want to give the appropriate training to the appropriate parties.
Right.
Also, age-specific training as well when we're talking about students. And again, these are things that the district, one of those things where we're talking about is conceptual buy-in from the board and the district cabinet as far as what the district wants to do going forward with them. But to answer your question fully, the success of our firm and our program is such that we've had districts that have said, not only do we want you to come into the district to do all the things you've been doing for us, which has been great, but we want someone, we want boots on the ground here, on a regular, full-time or part-time basis, to make sure that we're helping out and supporting daily operations going forward. That's one of the pieces that the board is evaluating at this point, as far as that full-time piece, as far as the management and accountability to make sure that the operations day-to-day are moving across smoothly. Whenever we do training, we always want to make sure that in fact, that the training is both understood and implemented properly. So in addition to training, we do exercises as well. Not necessarily- Not necessarily drills, because we get involved in drill evaluations as well, but actually taking real-world situations that are built around Mount Vernon and the buildings here, put those into play to see, okay, we gave you the foundation of how to respond to these things, let's actually do in a controlled environment. Here's the scenario, how would you respond to that? And make it a wholly productive situation where we can make sure that they understand the concepts and can respond appropriately, and we learn lessons every single time we do tabletop exercises and even functional exercises. And this is also in collaboration with emergency responders as well.
Okay.
Because they're the ones coming to your building.
Right. So my follow-up question to that is, it's a good segue, is when Bishop Edwards was here, Archbishop, Archbishop Edwards was here speaking about safety and talking about the children walking home from school. Do you also make recommendations to cities? In other words, you know, once the children leave our care, they've left our care.
Right.
So the question is, do you also make recommendations broadly to the community as well about what kind of safety they should be providing?
So legally, we're being retained by the district as a client to provide that advice. Certainly, and this happens often, if the district chooses to say, our consultant has advised us that they believe this to be the appropriate practice, and everything that we do, by the way, has rationale behind it. We're never going to say the world according to Altaris. If we tell you about a specific improvement opportunity, we're going to back it up with where that rationale comes from, citing, you know, reports, studies, lessons learned, those types of things. So we'll speak with you on best practices. So certainly, if there's something that kind of carries over to, let's say, the community, the city, that needs to be done, and we're always happy to sit in on collaborative meetings as well, because collaboration is key. One thing the bishop did say, which is I'm a big advocate of, in emergency management, safety, and security, you have to have uniformity across the district. No matter what building you're in here in Mount Vernon, everyone needs to be doing it the exact same way. And whether a staff member moves from building to building, we want them to know, if something happens here, I know exactly how to react appropriately there. We know that in some cases, things like substitute teachers can be the weak link. And it's not a knock on subs, it's just the fact that they weren't provided the appropriate training or the appropriate tools to do the job correctly. So we look at those gaps and loopholes, we close them to make sure that you're comprehensively safe.
And do you have any experience in, have you ever done any, been asked to give any advice on social media?
Yeah, absolutely. So social media has opened up an entirely new world.
Yep.
Of frustration for consulting firms like ours, school districts like yours, because it allows messages to get out there much more rapidly. So a couple of things on social media. Number one is that, because a lot of what we do as well deals with helping the district with communications in the wake of a critical incident. We know that messages travel very fast, and districts have to be incredibly transparent in what they do, because whether you want to be transparent or not, the message gets out there quicker than you probably can pick up the phone or put out a media release. So we want to be transparent in everything that we do and give factual information, because unfortunately, social media is a great tool, but often the message gets squelched, and there's problems going forward. So we'll work with you on that. As far as the component of monitoring on there, we talk about social media, we talk about how to utilize it, how to monitor it. There are applications out there that help districts to quote-unquote "geo-fence," which means that looking at a specific geographical area and monitor things like threats. So if the word gun, shooting, stamp, those types of things get on there, the district gets notification that that's happening on there, and then someone else can utilize it. I often equate the social media monitoring, if you try to do it yourself, it's like being the person in the casino in Las Vegas trying to monitor 500 cameras. It's not going to happen. There's actually research that says you can only look at cameras for a period of 20 minutes before you start to see cross-eyed going forward. So it's important that we have mechanisms in place. Cameras are one of those things where they're great tools for investigations, not so great about preventing things from happening, because it's very difficult for someone to watch to find something bad happening before it happens or in the process of happening. But for investigative tools, principals love them, because they can figure out things like who started the fight, or who stole property, or any of the things that are happening under, they're great investigative tools. Unfortunately, as much as we want them to be preventative tools, they are deterrent. You know, people, that's kind of one of those things where districts move very quickly in the wake of an incident like a Sandy Hook or Columbine or many other events, to put in, you know, cameras and things like that. They have their way, and they have their role, and they're a layer in what we're talking about here, but technology does not respond to emergencies. All of us do. You know, your emergency responders, your staff, your student, all of those people do. So it's important for us to make sure we develop their confidence and capability to do those things. That's a great question.
Thank you.
Sure.
One question.
Yes, sir.
For the most part, I mean, listen, it sounds like the word I associate with you've been, words that you've been using is standardized. Standardizing process, when we're talking about different buildings, there being a standardized process for our security and safety agents, that no matter what building they're in, it'll always be the same process, and that's something I think is needed. I'm sorry, I don't know if you mentioned how many years that you've been doing this?
So Altaris was formed in 2008.
Okay. So imagine, there's a phrase, they say it's teaching old dogs new tricks. You have measurements, that measuring, way to measure how effective your retraining of our district guards would be, and you would report that to us so that we can see effectiveness that Altaris has, through all during and through that process, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's all I got right now.
It's critically important, no matter what we're doing, is to measure the fidelity of all the interventions. So another piece is, we talk about threat assessment programs. We're big advocates of the comprehensive threat assessment guidelines, which was developed in Virginia. And part of that program is fidelity, is to make sure that when we're doing threat assessments, so when a person of concern is raised, is to go through a systematic process to evaluate that and implement the appropriate interventions going forward, rather than an ad hoc approach where it might be, in building one, let's say a principal, guidance counselor does it here, but in this building, they do it very, very differently. You really always want to deal with a nationally recognized, evidence-based approach when you're doing things like this, because ultimately, what's going to happen is that people are always going to ask the question, well, why did you respond in the manner that you responded? Well, because I thought that that was the best way to do it. No, we want to make sure that we implement the appropriate steps that are based on research and evidence to show that this is the right way, this is the best practice to do it, and make sure everyone understands how to do that going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a few questions.
Sure.
So first off, how many school districts have you handled that have 17 buildings? Or around, give or take around that amount?
Probably right now, currently, we're working with about three, which are about the same size as Mount Vernon, as far as number of buildings. The average school district is probably six to eight schools, but we have ones that are well more, you know, way more than that as well, and high schools, let's say, that have even more of occupancy.
And of those three, how many of them are similar to Mount Vernon? Because I'm, like, I'm not trying to be cute, but...
Absolutely.
Croton, Harmon, Dobbs Ferry, Scarsdale, that's not really great examples in terms of being similar to...
Does he work in...
Can you?
Yeah.
So can you give me an example, or give us an example of a district that you do provide these services for that has similar setup to Mount Vernon?
Sure. So next door in New Rochelle, we're working, White Plains, we've been working with for quite some time. North, as far as size, Arlington, Wappingers. We have several districts up by Buffalo of similar size. So, and honestly, it's not necessarily the size of the district, it's a whole bunch of components, as far as I think what you're looking for. It's both size, demographics, the type of things that you're dealing with, the type of resources you have or do not have, you know, whether it's in the community or within the school itself. And there is no boilerplate approach. So it's important to note that you can't necessarily take a boilerplate emergency plan and put it into a district, you can't have a boilerplate threat assessment plan. You can follow models, but you have to customize your approach based on the district itself.
Great. And then one more question. On the back page there, I'm assuming, Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, I'm assuming this is kind of like, you know, you pick one level, and we're talking about, I think, Trustee Miller asked a question, and you said that was something that we could talk about adding. I'm assuming, not to be cute, I'm assuming that adding equates to more expense.
Correct. As you move up in the levels, some districts want simply an assessment of their district. Others want training, others want the full approach as far as what I mentioned and outlined going forward, and then others want that full-time or part-time presence within the district. So as you move up in the levels, the fee obviously goes up. Our service...
But it's the whole level.
Correct.
So when you do Level 3, all the checkboxes, that's, we...
You get everything.
Gold package.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. I don't think I mentioned...
But please add that you are BOSIs, and we do a co-sir, so whatever money we spend, we get back half of it.
Absolutely. So Altaris is available, and most districts obtain our service through Southern Westchester BOSIs. In fact, we have districts across the state. As I mentioned earlier, up by Buffalo, we've got three or four districts up there that cross-contract for the service. What that enables the district to do is, it's obviously simple to get our service, we're authorized through the BOSIs co-sir, and it also makes the district, allows the district to get aid back, which is significant in many cases for our service.
Great.
Hey, how you doing today?
Good evening.
So one of the things that you stipulated, which is true, is that administrators, and a lot of individuals don't know this, that administrators, they really don't have that much time in regards to when it comes to security and safety, and you have to make sure that you have individuals in your building that'll be able to take care of that, so they could take care of the instruction and the supervision that's going on. Will this include a discipline code book being created for the district?
So discipline is not something that is within our purview, it's out of our lane. In fact, state legislation came out recently that required districts to sign a security MOU, a memorandum of understanding, that clearly differentiates any providers, such as school resource officers, security vendors, security guards, that discipline has to be, cannot be delegated away from the districts, or talks of that. So vendors are typically kept out of that particular process. Certainly, when it comes to things like provisions within the code of conduct, we can certainly weigh in on certain things that relate to safety and security and emergency management, but as far as the actual discipline, that's not something that we are experts in, nor would we, you know, be guiding the district on.
So how long does your team analyze a building? Or buildings?
So the process for us is that it's a couple of different things that we do. One is interviews with key personnel. So that, at the building level, that's numerous people, that's principal, assistant principal, even head custodians. District-wide, we're looking at district cabinet members, business, superintendent, technology, facilities, athletic directors, all of those things that we cover through there. The other component of it are physical walkthroughs of each of the buildings, to look at infrastructure, to identify gaps and loopholes, to also look at things that might have come out of the interview process to say, as someone that works and lives in this building every day, here is my concern, can we look at this closely on that? So we're going to look at those things. So we're going to go through that process. So typically, we spend, it's several weeks to go through just the review process, and then several weeks more for us to prepare a report, particularly on the size of Mount Vernon. So the report is very comprehensive, it's going to be in excess of 100 pages. However, the format that we put it together is very digestible, because I see your reaction, it's very digestible. The other thing that we do is that we actually curate all the information in the report, spreadsheet it out, prioritize it on what our recommendation is to say, we think that this should be done in the next 30 days or immediately, one to three months, three to six months, so that we have a project management piece to work with. Because if I give you a report that's like this, you're going to look at that and say, okay, we'll get to that later, and it's going to fall to the bottom of the pile. I want it to stay at the top of the pile, and we want to work with you to actually make that progress and improve your condition, as I mentioned earlier.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
How long does it take to, for you to assess, do an assessment?
How long does it take us to do the assessment itself?
Yes.
Well, I think I kind of mentioned that as far as the question here. Again, we're going to be within every, do the interviews, do the building walkthroughs. For a district like Mount Vernon, we're talking probably in excess of a month to go through the process. I would say probably closer to two months, because it's, and again, it's also going to be important about what the availability is. So we're at a time of year right now, so if the district were to engage our firm and say, we want to get this done soon, what we would do is try to get it into our project queue. We always have to evaluate buildings, at least the walkthrough portion, when the buildings are occupied with students, because it's a totally different dynamic when you're looking at an empty building. So again, arrival and dismissal process, lunch periods, how the flow of the building is there, recess, those types of things have to be evaluated with people in the building. We also come back to the district in the evening hours to look at things like lighting in the evening, as far as, you know, how the campuses are lit, things. So it really is going to be dependent on the logistics as far as our availability, the district's availability as far as key personnel getting in here, and what we'll probably do is if we can get into the buildings before the end of the school year, we'll do that component. We can always push the interview portion to when school's out, because again, this is a very difficult time of year for your building administrators. So to ask them to spend all this time with us when they're dealing with tests and graduation and things like that, but we'll work with the district to get those, the logistics worked out. Sure.
Any other questions? Do you want to go on one?
Thank you, Mr. Laplaca.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pleasure.
And now we'll hear from Dr. Joyce Corpus and Ms. Sanchez.
Good evening, Madam President, distinguished board trustees, Madam Superintendent, Superintendent's Cabinet, Mount Vernon City School District at large, families, and community at large. I'm Dr. Joyce Corpus, one of the specialized supervisors for the district, along with working closely with fellow supervisors and special ed staff. Also, one of my responsibilities include working closely with and supervising the special ed instructional coaches, Ms. Tiana Hawkins and Ms. Glenn De Sanchez, who is here to present with me today. We are known as SEET Special Ed Instructional Team. We've been working together for four years. Our main goal and focus is to ensure that our students with IEPs receive their SDI, which is specially designed instruction, which is based on their IEPs, to help them succeed academically and to have access to the general education curriculum. We also provide workshops, presentations, and trainings geared to differentiate instruction, data module workshops, explicit direct instruction, reading intervention programs such as FLIS, which stands for Foundational Literacy Intervention System, and of course, everything related to SDI, such as accommodations and modifications, instructional strategies, resources used such as Bloom Cards and educatory lessons aligned to explicit direct instruction. The coaches work with special ed teachers by meeting with them individually, pushing into classes to provide support, to model, to assist with strategies, provide resources, training, et cetera. But today, we are here to present two very special after-school programs. Before we share the PowerPoint presentation with specific information, let me start by saying thank you to Dr. Bennett Conway, now Acting Superintendent and the Office of School Improvement, for ensuring that these programs went from planning stage to fruition. Thank you so much. They are pilot programs for this year, which gives us time to work out the, which work out the logistics to see how we can extend, increase our services and our enrollment. We're so excited and we're grateful to have this opportunity to present something that we consider to be monumental, because as long as I've been in this district, it's been a long time, we never had school programs specifically for our students with IEPs. Yay! Along with transportation. Ladies and gentlemen, we will present for you this evening information pertaining to the FOCUSED program, designed for our students in our cohort programs, students with similar profiles, where they may be in ungraded classes, classified with autism, and are significantly delayed at Rebecca Turner Elementary School, Pennington, and Grimes. These are our pilot programs for this year. And special acknowledgement to Alexis Santa Vica, who is a lead social worker for our FOCUSED program, for putting together the FOCUSED presentation. We worked together, we coordinated together, and she put together the actual FOCUSED PowerPoint presentation. The SEED program, given the name by special ed teacher Michael Jernigans and Ms. Sanchez, is designed for our students in graded special classes, who may be two or three levels below grade level. These schools include Graham, Parker, Williams, and Columbus. Schools for both programs were selected in advance, prior to our involvement, but based on numbers of students at these schools that meet the profiles. Special acknowledgement to Ms. Sanchez for... Special acknowledgement to Ms. Sanchez for putting together the curriculum and the PowerPoint for SEED. This way, teachers don't have to worry about, what do I have to do? What do I have to teach? What do I need to have prepared? It's all ready, packaged, ready to go. Both of these programs are designed to help recruit some of the skills that students need to work on or improve, especially with the impact of the pandemic, but in a fun-filled way, while working on academics, social skills, communication skills and daily living skills. I will start with the overview of the FOCUSED program, which I had the pleasure of providing the name for, for which stands for For Our Children's Unique Social Emotional Development. After I finish with presenting FOCUSED, Ms. Sanchez will present an overview of the SEED, Special Ed Extended Day Program. And you know what seeds, once you let those seeds fall down, they start to grow and you nurture them. So let's get started and thank you all for your attention. Lots of time and challenges involved with recruiting. As many staff have committed, as you know, many staff have committed to other tasks at this time, but we have found some great staff who are committed to working with these programs. So let's get started. Okay, so FOCUSED, again, social skills after-school program. You'll see who's on there. And then the why. Well, the goal of the FOCUSED group is to foster increased social communication skills. We're going to be looking at activities that are geared to daily living skills, social skills, communication skills. And our theme is let's plan a party. Because when you plan a party, you might think it's all fun, but there's work. And you have to know first of all, who are you going to invite? You got to plan what kind of party? And then we're going to work with the students so they understand what are the various types of parties? What are the expectations? What is needed to have a party? And then we're going to have complete planner checklist that that, all the groups at the various schools, Rebecca Turner, Pennington and Grimes, they're going to have, follow the same guidelines, same theme. Then we get into week two. Now we get into arts and crafts invitations. That's when you start to create your guest list. Who do we invite? What do we put on our invitations? And so you're going to create these, the children, working with the social worker, Special Ed teacher and teaching assistants. They're going to be in groups, working on all these fun-filled activities, while also addressing daily living skills, academic skills, communication skills. I mean, you can't go wrong. And of course, here you'll see a snapshot of the curriculum materials that we plan to incorporate, some of the fun-filled activities. And then week three, we're going to start talking about that budget. What do we need to buy? Are we having pizza? Are we having hot dogs? Are we having hamburger? What are we having? And then, of course, we're going to work on handing out the invitations. That's also a skill. You can't just go, here, come to my party. You have to know, hey, you got to have some finesse. Hi, how you doing? So these are all the things that we're going to be working on, setting up a dinner table. Also, getting ready for the party. Hygiene, what kind of clothing? Is it casual? Is it formal? What are you wearing? Is it a costume party? So these are all the things that will be incorporated in FOCUSED. Week four, again, social skills, listening, sharing. How do you greet your guests? What do you say? How do you interact while you're at the party? What type of non-verbal body language do you interact, do you exhibit as you're working with different people? And we know our students in these cohort programs, these are skills that they really, really need. By the way, I don't know if you noticed, in Lower Westchester, they don't really have these types of programs in Lower Westchester. So this is another monumental step we're taking. So we're looking forward to starting now, first next year in the beginning. Week five, June 6, communication skills, appropriate behaviors. What is unexpected behaviors versus expected behaviors? We're going to talk about some social scenarios. We're going to talk about appropriate manners. Then we have problem solving. You know, sometimes there's some problems and you have some ways to have conflict resolution. Maybe somebody's getting a little rowdy at the party. Maybe somebody's getting a little greedy at the party. So how do we work with these different resolutions and how do we address them accordingly? And then we have week six, set up the party, making the decorations. We're going to have arts and crafts again. And we're going to review our checklist to make sure everything was done. And guess what? Then we go throw the party, and that is it for the FOCUSED program. It's party time with the FOCUSED program. And now Ms. Glenda Sanchez will present for you the SEED program. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. My name is Glenda Sanchez, and it's hard to follow her act, but I'll try. So this year, we are initiating the SEED after-school program, and this is particular for the students that are on the graded and are taking tests and so, and self-contained. What we're doing is, this is a pilot program, so we do have a smaller cohort for this year. But moving forward next year, I know that once the kids see the fun that everyone else is having, we'll be able to sell it to the other families and maybe encourage them to participate for the following school year. The way that this is going to work is they're going, each class is going to choose what they would like to investigate. So they'll have three curriculums that they can choose from. There's Mysteries, Taking Flight, Exploring Games, Toys and Interventions. So the teachers will receive a full curriculum, and all they would need to do is just click the hyperlinks for each activity that needs to be done. The lesson plans are already created. In order to meet the grade level's expectations, part of what we're doing is we're providing small group instruction. So we're identifying the needs. So the idea is the teachers that are going to be working with our students are the teachers that normally work with them during the day. So they don't have to build rapport with the students. They're going to already know their strengths and the weaknesses and how they can target the instruction and interventions needed during the after-school program. So what this looks like, look like is week A, we will be concentrating on English Language Arts and making sure that we are hitting foundational skills in that area. So we'll be using FLIS as our support system, which uses Orton-Gillenkamp and ORSPIRE, depending on the need of the teacher. We are also going to be using the STEM unit, which is the curriculum that we're providing. And we are also using edgery lessons, which are explicit direct instruction curriculum that provides, the template's already there, and it'll provide the structure for the students so that they can practice the skill that they're going to be learning. Another small group instruction piece will be that they will be accessing Epic or La Lilo in order to support computer-based interventions and provide the practice as well. On, in week B, we will be concentrating on math, because obviously, we know those are the two core instructions that we want to make sure that we're targeting their foundational skills. Same thing, we will be doing foundational math skills with, using the MDIS system from the Envisions program that we currently have in the district. We've done a lot of work around that with our special education teachers. So this is not something new. This is just something that they're going to be able to pick up and move forward with it. We'll be having, obviously, the STEM, in the STEM, in the units of curriculum, we will have math lessons also embedded in there. And the, for the computer section, we will be using mathgames.com. So just to give you a snapshot of what the curriculum looks like, so this is just a snapshot of the Mysteries curriculum, the remediation tools we're suggesting for them to use. For the IEP goals, because again, part of the program is making sure that we're targeting and identifying their IEP goals and improving in the progress monitoring of that. So we will be using Boom Learning, which is a computer-based system that provides data analysis in regards to how the students are moving forward with their success in the goal that they're practicing. Another item that we will be using is the edgery and the MDIS kit. Each curriculum will be focusing on reading, math, science and art. We will be highlighting specific power goals that we want to focus on, the standards, and they are bridgeable, so that way we can address them, whether they're be in third grade or whether they be in fifth grade. We're going to be able to target and scaffold the instruction for them. This is a sample. All of these items are hyperlinked. So literally, all the teacher has to do is click on the item, and they will connect straight to the lesson that they get to access. And then this is a sample of the lesson that they're going to receive. So for example, we're going to be studying the art of M.C. Escher and how he uses math to create art and using geometry and just really exploring how the mystery of the math with art and how it plays with your visual effects when you're looking at those pieces of art. So this is, again, we're going to explore with videos, get to know the artist as they were and explore the products that they've created. And then they're going to create the art themselves. They're going to replicate what the artist has done. And again, using, incorporating math and science in order to create these pieces of art.
And so SEED is scheduled to start May 9. Wish us luck. Okay, we know Ms. right around the corner. So we're working on putting our transportation together and end by June 17, staying with FOCUSED. And so we are looking forward, we hope that you approve, and you will just give us that lovely, lovely good luck to go on with this program, with these programs. That's it, right? Thank you so very much. I'd like to just say, on behalf of the Special Ed Instructional Team, we present these flowers to our new Acting Superintendent, Dr. Bennett Conroy. Congratulations, Dr. Bennett Conroy.
Joyce, can I ask a question? Is this for life, this is only for the cohort?
The SEED, I mean, I'm sorry, the FOCUSED is for the cohort and SEED is for special classes.
Okay, so life skill hasn't?
Life skills are, so we kind of talk about cohort classes as life skills. They also call them ACE, which is Academic Career Exploration. So they kind of like all kind of fit in there together, okay? But the FOCUSED curriculum basically is just teaching them life skills and social, you know, social interaction, you know? Communication skills. So basically falls under all that. All through the process of planning a party.
And Dr. Corpus, we have all staff in place and buses are ready for Monday?
We have all staff ready to go. We're working on the buses. Because we're waiting for the permission slip to come through, so that we can get our transportation in order.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
I think this is superb and a great addition to our community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just have, I just have recommendations. That's all. I think it's amazing. I love it. I just want to recommend, this is a pilot, so when we are having it full-blown for everyone, make it multilingual, because remember, a lot of our kids are non-English speakers. They come from non-English speaking families. Also, create a parent, like, program home connection in which you will give the parents activities so they could back up what the students have learned in the programs at home. So we could have, you know, a parent, you know, home program partnership. Because it would be good that if they go and they learn all these wonderful things, you know, just tell the parents, this is what we're doing, this is how we're doing, just little pointers. How can you keep on implementing these skills at home? Absolutely. Again, this is, this year is our pilot year, so next year, we'll start out fresh at the beginning, and we will definitely take all of those suggestions and recommendations into consideration and make sure that we follow through accordingly. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Corpus and Ms. Sanchez. Before we move on to number three, which is Mr. Silva, I know we have the other security company inside here, Mr. Moreno, so if you can introduce yourself for quick, two seconds.
Very good. That works for me, especially after that presentation. I don't know how anybody can follow that. I will do my best to prove to everybody here that my enthusiasm might come close to theirs. I'm not quite sure I can do that, but I'll do my best. I am very passionate about security, in particular, school security. Brager has been providing school security since 2004. We cover, thank you. We cover 12 districts in Westchester right now, or the 40-plus districts that there are. And we cover districts as far north as Greenwood Lake and as far south as Manhattan. And we've been doing it, I think, very well for a while. And I thank you all for having me here and entrusting me, perhaps, to, with the safety of your children and students. It's something that I enjoy doing very much, and I implore my staff and hold them accountable to do the same. Many security companies are very good at sending somebody, and then they send the bill. And you don't really see or interact with them in between. You may see the guards every day, perhaps a supervisor comes to visit once in a while, but with us, you will feel the interaction. It's daily. I work with John on a daily basis in different districts throughout the region, and I also work with the school board, principals, teachers, and my office interacts constantly with them. We're always available. If I were to be awarded this district with this size, of course, I would have to assign a dedicated account manager, and everybody would have that person's cell number as well as mine. We have a 24-hour command center that where we monitor social media, we monitor the police radio, all first responder radios. You'd be surprised how much stuff goes on 24/7 that might impact the school in, when kids are waiting for the bus. The other day, we had an incident where there was an armed person running through the streets near one of our districts. Our command center heard about it in the middle of the night. It went on where it was, they didn't apprehend this person almost at the time when people were going to be waiting for the buses out there. So we called the district, said, listen, I think maybe you should order delay opening for a couple hours, and they did. And it turns out the person was able to steal a car and get away, but we didn't know that. We didn't know that this person who was supposedly armed with a knife wouldn't be lurking near one of the bus stops. So that's the kind of thing we do a lot. I spent nearly 30 years in NYPD. I retired as a captain, commanding officer. And I like to think that my passion there is now translated over to what I do here. I miss that job terribly. I loved it, but I'm able to work with people, law enforcement officials, that, some of whom I know and some of whom I met now. But it allows me that connection to my previous career, and it gives me a sense of purpose that I enjoy very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moreno.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the name of it? Brigger. And they were working together. Brigger, B-R-I-G-E-R.
Okay.
Yes, and they work together with Altaris. So the two of them are going to work together. It's a combination.
Does this?
No, they are not, but Altaris is.
Does this include, I know the first guy talked about technology. Does this also include cameras in all schools? Well, no. Is there, is that a kind of a thought?
Well, yes, we have cameras in our schools, but you will definitely monitor, have monitored those cameras with your.
Our staff, we don't, we don't sell anything either. We provide security, trained, licensed, and secure. And they, many of whom have law enforcement experience. And yes, we routinely monitor.
Right.
And we do things like hook with people, busting, moving parents in and out, or, you know, dismissal, mostly dismissal.
But in case we are short of security officers, we can always call them to provide us with security officers. In other words, we should never be short.
We provide exactly that service for White Plains School District.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Silva, it's your time.
Thank you. I will be brief. The state did an audit. The state did an audit of our natural gas practices. This audit referred back to 2005, 17 years ago, when somebody made a deal with a natural gas company. Fast forward 10 years until this administrator. Fast forward 10 years until this administration got here, that same arrangement was with this natural gas company. The state cited us for, the state's study was from the period from 2011 to 2018, but I mentioned 2005 because that was the root of the issue. This administration discovered the problems with the natural gas purchase and in 2018, four years ago, we went on a state contract for that. We are now about to enter our third state contract for the procurement of natural gas. The state also talked about our overspending and we believe that their calculations, well, we know that they left out a large sum of money that we received as a rebate from the natural gas company and we disagree with their calculations in terms of what we spent. But just briefly, this goes back 17 years and the area, they finished the audit four years ago. We just got the audit report and four years ago, we submitted our corrective action plan. Everything has been in place for four years. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll just say that there are several resolutions related to that, that the board is going to be asked to approve tonight. One of those is that you will see the actual corrective action plan that is being submitted to the state and which refers back to what we did four years ago and which is in place today.
Thank you, Mr. Silva.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the superintendent's report.
So we want to committee report?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
Happy Educators Week to everyone. First shout out to all the educators. All right. So I have a couple of things to report out. On 4/2, let me see how I'm gonna do this. I'll start a little backwards. So yesterday, the mayor of Mount Vernon State of the City address. I just want you to know that the musicians that were there last night will be some of the sought-out high musicians that we've ever seen come out of Mount Vernon. So shout out to the Denzel Washington School of the Arts for a wonderful presentation that they did last night at, at the mayor of Mount Vernon State of City address. The next thing I want to give a shout out to the principal by the name of Jamal Doggett. Got a chance to go and hang out with Ken Silva Doggett on April 28th. And we went to go see some, look at some things that were, that were alarming and Principal Doggett made sure that he alerted Ken Silva in regards to that. So we went to go look at those things, but before I talk about those things, just want to talk about how the education that's in that building is taking students to another level. So we have horticulture, which is something that just like has been around for a very long time, but individuals are respecting it more so when COVID came around where everybody was going and planting and everything like then brought up all the seeds and stuff at Home Depot. So by the time I got there, the seeds and stuff wasn't there, right? So, but anyway. Shout out to the, the leadership of Doggett and his, the educational team there are thinking outside the box where they were using their windows and waterways for the, for their presentations of seeds growing and observing them. And not only that, so they used the window and the window pane, but they also put up the standards, the, the procedure that took place. And so that meant that when students are walking past, they don't have to necessarily go inside the classroom to see this procedure taking place. They could see it while they're walking through the hallways, right? So we have our hallways are now a place for you to be able to learn. And then we walked through the door and the stairs weren't up to par. So that's one of, another thing that, that Doggett had pointed out because when they have fire drills, that is dangerous for the children, the teachers and, and anyone in there. And so Ken Silva made sure that he made note of those things that were not in place. And also, the playground had a couple of things that needed to, that, that were alarming. And so one of the, so, so at the playground, there's two different apparatuses there that you could play on. And so one of them is going to be removed and a new one is going to be put in place. And so Ken Silva said, don't look forward to like a Spider-Man, Batman type of apparatus being put up there because that's what I was asking for. I like to feel like Batman when I'm on the, in the playground. And then last but not least, so this is like a, just a, just a, you know, they tell all educators in the building to make a wishlist. So on the wishlist is to get a parking lot. Because there's about 90 cars a day over there at Rebecca Turner, right, Doggett? Put your thumbs up in the air, Doggett. So shout out to Doggett. That was a really good experience. Shout out to Dr. Gail White Wallace, early childhood. On April 21st, I read a book aloud, the title of the book is called Elmer, E L M E R. And Elmer is this elephant and he, he didn't like being the color that he was, but he wasn't a gray elephant. He was just a different color and he didn't like being this different color. And then when he started blending in with everyone, he didn't like that either because he stood out. And so after we finished reading the book and then we did a paint, and I cannot remember the name of the artist, but we were able to paint our own Elmer. There was about 35 students there, early childhood students there, and we were there till like 8:30 at night. And everyone was painting, we had a really good time. They had some raffles going on, you know, the entire time while the raffles and things were going on, I was just painting my Elmer. Okay? And when, when, when the Zoom was ended, I was a little bit upset because I didn't finish my Elmer yet, but I kept going with my Elmer. So shout out to Dr. Gail White Wallace, who brought children together on a Zoom to listen to a book as well as illustrate their own Elmer. Thank you. Next, I've been meeting with some students in various different high schools here in Mount Vernon, so we've been discussing etiquette and we had the opportunity to talk about the etiquette of being in a classroom. And so the word etiquette that individuals often use, etiquette is an understanding, right? And so when you say somebody lacks etiquette, they lack understanding of that particular situation, right? So like showing up to a funeral with a wedding dress on, you know, stuff like that. But anyway, so our second etiquette class was based on dining and there was a local restaurant that gave us a discount. And it was about 12 of us from different high schools here in Mount Vernon. And I just got to tell you that we have some students here in Mount Vernon that are what they, what we call in the hip hop nation of the bomb. And that means that you are on point, you are all that when you are called the bomb. And so I look forward to continuing with these conversations with our students and just inviting adults to take time out to have these conversations with the students, which takes me into hanging out at the high school on 4/21/22 and 4/28/22. I got a chance to hang out with the career technical education in the photography class. So I got to see the, the students that are taking the CTE classes, who said they didn't really want to take those class, that class? And then we talked about how it would benefit them. And so the Channel 6 room was what I got a chance to observe, which is antiquated, right? The materials are antiquated. Not sure how that can be used, but hopefully it can be used and, and resurrected. How does that sound? For the CTE program that we have there. And then I got a chance to sit next to Dr. Bennett Conroy and some other individuals from Mount Vernon because it was Peace Day at Mount Vernon High School. And there was a, there was a calm hush in the school on that day and, and the students did welcome us, having conversations with them. And so what I, I keep reiterating that, conversations with them, walking and talking with them. And, and then us listening to what they are saying. And so some of them stated that, you know, some of the, the lights in the hallways are dark and dim and, and they said that there, there needs to be some kind of law and order is what one student called it and rules and regulations need to take place in the school cafeteria. And their, in their tone, they said the school cafeteria was a whack place to hang out at. And then I went to the school cafeteria and it was kind of boring. What I mean by boring is that the walls was like just really white. And so they said that they look forward to the cafeteria changing and where we add some color to the cafeteria so that they will be able to go and hang out in the cafeteria, even if they don't eat the cafeteria food. And so that is the end of my, my report. And so once again, I just want to give a shout out to the individuals who go to work to work. And thank you, Mr. Doggett, for every time that I come to the school, showing me around and, and, and being there and being present. Thank you.
I'm not having committee report at this time. However, I would like to take a time. It is currently May 4th. May 1st was decision day, you know, for everybody, yes. And I want to say thank you to all the seniors from across all three high schools. I've been seeing nothing but posts, you know, social media lately, everybody's been talking about it, how it's negative, but for once I really saw Mount Vernon City School District in a positive light. People were happy, people are graduating, people are going to amazing schools and I want to say I am so proud of this district. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
So sorry, I know we jumping, but I asked to see if I could go next because I want our beautiful, wonderful special ed ladies back there to listen to what I'm going to say really quickly. So first of all, for all my Star Wars fan, May the 4th be with you. So happy, happy Star Wars Day. Also, May is National Brain Cancer and Brain Tumor Awareness Month, so, and it's also Mental Health Awareness Month. My committee report, so I'm going to start with the Special Education Advisory Council. Our next parent workshop will be on mental health awareness and it will take place Wednesday, May 18th, like always, from 6:00 to 7:30. So we're going to have a presentation and then we're going to have some discussions. So everything will be forthcoming to, on the, we're going to post it on the, on the website, we're going to be sending all the flyers to the schools. We have not taken, you know, away from the table, our behavioral strategy, strategies for parents, you know, for, for autism month. So it will happen. It may happen in the month of May or it may happen in June, the first week of June, but it will happen. The other thing is, other than, you know, this is outside the special ed committee, the swim, swimming, Mount Vernon High School. I just want to say to Coach Flores, you're doing an amazing job with everything that you're doing. He's lifeguard, free lifeguard training classes start May 9th, so reach out to him. Also, he has an amazing opportunity to all of you guys. It's SALT, it is, you know, it says, are you interested in swimming, learning to swim, join the swim team, become a lifeguard? So we have SALT, that's a suited aquatic leadership team. And they just reach out to him or go to Schoology and I'm gonna make sure that this is somehow posted on the website so we have all the opportunity because if you go to Schoology, you have to put a code to access the team. So it's going to happen Mondays and Wednesdays or Tuesdays and Thursdays from 3:30 to 5:00 PM. So please, guys, look out for this. This is amazing. The other thing is, remember, we have Mount Vernon Swim with Mr. Travis and they are offering beginning swimming lessons for the little ones. Go to mountvinnanswim.com. We also have twin, the team, a Westchester Aquatics, that is for more advanced swimmers that if they want to become part of the team there. And then the thing that I, I'm very proud of is that the drowning prevention program for our special needs babies is taking shape. And hopefully we will start it in July. We already have the certified people. We already have, hopefully, a partnership with Magnita, Magnified Autism. And it, it, we sat down and we had a meeting and it, we have so many things, we were so excited, like I'm really like you guys, I'm like really just static and excited about it because we, we were discussing why only just do a drowning prevention, why can we just do a swim, you know, swim academy for them as well? And then we were like, hey, why not a swim special, special needs swim team for Mount Vernon? So we just started growing and growing, growing from there. So it, it, we are super, super hyped about this. And lastly, we have Dr. Bennett Conroy and I, we sat down and we started talking about, in which I did speak also to our trustee Mitchell, about murals. So I went to Dr. Bennett Conroy and, and, and Dr. Gorman and, and I, you know, and I was like, how about making peace murals? So we were just talking and throwing ideas and all of a sudden, this just became a traveling art exhibit from all of our schools. Because, you know, the library has been asking for, you know, artwork for the kids and everything else. So Dr. Bennett Conroy has people that are going to donate the materials. So the idea is that each principal in each school will select a class. And then we're going to provide the material and they're going to receive a canvas. They're going to decide an anti-violence theme and they're going to create their own mural. And this is going to become, you know, like a traveling art exhibit, anti-violent art exhibit. They're going to have it in the schools and then we could bring it, you know, we could probably change, interchange the murals, the schools, and we could bring them here, take it to the library, put them in other places. That way, everybody could see our kids' art. And that is my report. Oh, I'm sorry. And also, don't forget, community swim. The swim pool is available for community swim, so go utilize it.
Thank you, Trustee Sorensen. Can you give us the, the date of the special ed meeting, if it's going to be Zoom or is it going to be...
It's going to be, I apologize, yes, it's going to be a Zoom, parent workshop like every other one. And by the way, the last one was very nice and very, I forgot to talk about it. We, we discussed on recognizing the early signs of autism with our kids and it was really, a lot of parents had great questions and, and they had concerns and even one of our students started asking questions about himself and, you know, do I have autism or do I, this is me. And it was really, it was a very, very nice workshop.
I do, and I'm excited as well. This is an exciting night. This is great. Okay, so I think it was five years ago, I went to the New York State School Board Association Annual Meeting in New York City at like the Hilton Hotel and I really wasn't looking forward to going because I don't really like conventions. I did that for many years. Anyway, I went and there was this one seminar on, from the Hicksville School District and it was about a parent resource center that they had started basically from scratch. And of course, not of course, but I got very excited about it and I went up and spoke with the, the women who had started it. And then I came back and I started talking to Dr. B.C. about it. And we, we tried and the timing had to be right, but anyway, the timing finally was right and we got the, some of the, the funds that we got, the, the grants from the government that are, can only be used for like one-time things, as special money that we got that can't be used for regular operations, but can use for one-time things. And as soon as we got the grant, I was texting saying, can we please have the parent resource center? And guess what? We have it! This is a, I, I am so excited. This is a dream come true. It, it's... It, it's really, it's still a work in progress. It's a dream come true. But I want to thank Dr. Vanda Canroy so much. And the big shout out goes to the parent liaisons. Woo! I am always, I'm always shouting out for the parent liaisons. But you, you ladies have just done an amazing job. And so tomorrow, we still don't have someone to actually run the resource center every day, but we'll, we'll get that person hired sooner or later. But tomorrow, there's going to be a kickoff meeting, uh, with a meet and greet with parents. And the, uh, parent liaisons have identified certain parents and invited them to come. And they're going to be taking them through, uh, what the parent resource center will mean to them, so on and so forth. The hours are still TBD, but going forward, we're planning on having evening hours because we did survey the community, evening hours as well as, uh, certain weekend hours. So this is a really big deal. It's at the STEAM High School. We have a special entrance, uh, from the parking lot and signage. And, um, it, the, the parent liaisons have done an amazing job on the room. I just saw, uh, some pictures. And I just, I, I'm so proud of the team for getting this done. In addition to that, they have an entire schedule for the month of May, which, um, which presents what the calendar, what's going to be happening in the parent resource center every day. So there's career counseling, counseling support for parents, um, information on getting your GED, career counseling, substance abuse awareness, um, Mental Health Day for parents as special ed students, um, Mental Health Mindfulness and Relaxation Activities, Mental Health and Nutrition Day, uh, so on and so forth. So we're, we're kicking this off. It's a very robust schedule. I'm not surprised that, that this team has put that together and I'm sure it will be excellent. And I just hope that everyone in the community ultimately ends up getting to visit the parent resource center. And once again, I, I'm thrilled. I think this is another, as many of the things that we've discussed tonight, another huge milestone for the district and for the community. And I want to say thank you to everyone who worked so hard on this. Thanks.
Yes!
Trustee Millard, um, you said the kickoff is tomorrow?
Tomorrow morning, 9:00 to 11:00. I'll be working.
I have a question. Uh, a question. Are you guys, are you guys going to have, well, I know you are because I'm seeing the smiles over there. You guys are going to have a library, right? Yeah. Okay, so will you be accepting any kind of donations of people that might want to donate books to the parent? Okay, great, great, great.
Trustee Minos Patterson?
You gotta talk into the mic.
Trustee Minos, I don't have my mic.
I, I don't have a report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Redd? Trustee White?
I don't have, I don't have a report, but I couldn't follow this, this side of the room.
I know, right?
Because they're amazing. Next meeting, it'll be us.
Next meeting, okay, next meeting. Okay.
But it's amazing and, um...
Doing good stuff.
We're all doing good stuff, so remember that.
Yeah. Trustee Mitchell?
Oh, I do want to remind you about, uh, about our, um, don't tell me.
Sometime today.
We all know.
You want us to come back?
No. How does this slip my mind? We're having a teacher's workshop. I mean, no. Okay. Please don't film this. Yes, please. A senior moment because it just went right from my head.
HR Committee.
I'm going to give it...
No, she can, now she remembers. The HR Committee, go ahead. They're going to have a teacher's seminar. Remember? So, okay, you go ahead.
Mr. Ted, please do.
Um, the HR Committee, um, discussed yesterday that we are having a, our first virtual diversity career fair for educators. Um, as of 3:30 this afternoon, we had 137 candidates. And so each school has their, we're having a main session and then each school has their own Zoom. Candidates have been assigned, assigned to the schools. They self-scheduled appointments. So we're hoping that we will be able to canvass candidates to call in for compact committees and be fully staffed September 1st.
Yay!
So that was on behalf of Trustee White giving her committee report.
I'm really sorry. It just went out of my head.
Listen, I was on the committee too and I couldn't remember. It's one of those things. By that time, you know, with this, we couldn't remember. Trustee Mitchell, anything for you?
Uh, yeah, I got some stuff. So I'm going to jump on the, first, the lunchroom situation at Rebecca Turner. Like some of, so many of our other, so many of our other, uh, cafeterias, when you walk in them, it looks like, ugh. Who wants to sit there and eat, let alone sit there and hang out? So, say what?
Mount Vernon High School.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah.
Well, a lot of them are like that.
High school? I'm sorry. But they're, it's from the, from the schools that I've been touring mostly, when I go in them, they, they look dreary, dark, peeling, you know, just not cute. So, um, Trustee Sorensen and I did have a conversation and the idea about, uh, the art, it would involve the students. We get fresh coat of white paint. That's an, that's, that's a whole, that's a wall. That's a blank canvas, you know? And the children, the students would be able to explore all their artistic abilities by creating these murals and it can change every year. You know, you maybe just use like one class, maybe the sixth grade or the eighth grade class would be the ones who can create that art. And it, you know, and then, of course, this, just our new district website would have, be able to display all of that. So our parents and the public can easily see all of that as well. So definitely something we talked about, just like we also talked about, uh, the importance of the, uh, Preston the Neighborhood School Initiative, uh, which we're going to, I'm going to continue pressing that along with my fellow trustees because it needs to happen. Um, I was recently at Trap, Trap Hagan with, uh, Mr. Silver, uh, ex- investigating some sinkholes there, uh, that we're, uh, that we need to have definitely filled up. We had a contractor there who was telling us exactly what's going on. Mr. Silver's going to give me an update on what the proposals are. Um, one of the things at Trap that I want to mention is we had, recently we resolved to have a great amount of debris at, uh, Trap Hagan, which is close to the Cross County Parkway side, removed. And I want to say that it's all been, all of what, uh, I think the last time we went, it was at least, uh, 96% was gone.
Ooh, nice.
And, which is great because it opened up a whole area over there that we definitely did talk about turning it into green space, okay? Because that part of the parking lot is just not necessary. We gotta, yeah, one, one thing over there we need to take care of that, uh, all of it was safety wise, but to turn it into a green space would be the target. Um, also, there's a portion of fence over there that was cut out due to some, uh, retainer wall repair years back. It just looks awful. That's getting, uh, repaired. That's already underway. Um, speaking on, uh, Rebecca Turner, uh, I've been there a couple of times. Principal Doggett, my guy, we talked about a couple of things. The parking lot is high up on the chain of things that need to be done. The recent playground inspect- inspections are also driving the playground initiative, the revitalization across the whole district. So we know, you know Rebecca Turner's on the list. And I, I know Rebecca Turner as Longfellow because that's where I was at because I'm old, right? But it's, it's definitely part of my plan to see all of our playgrounds get, uh, you know, become something beautiful. Um, but I want to also say that, just keep this in your cap somewhere, somewhere in here, we're, we're looking to find funds to put a soccer field at Rebecca Turner as well, okay? So just keep that in mind. So the Leadership Academy, formerly Columbus School, and that celebration is coming for that renaming, for that building and for homeschool, which is now, um, the Honors Academy. Thank you, Dr. B.C. because she knows everything that I don't. Um, so at, uh, at Leadership Academy, 384 feet of fence is being, is underway. So we talked about this recently. I was on the PTA call and the parents were just, you know, uh, parents, staff, the community has been, their voices were very much heard. Um, it's already underway. The replacement of the fence is there. It's happening now. So it's a good chance it might be done even before we close the doors for the summer vacation. So that's really cool. Um, and finally, regarding the, the building condition survey, community input. Remember, I reached out. I said, hey, everybody, I'm going to reach out to people so that they can come join us. We need a couple of parents, not a bunch, uh, to come and talk to us about building, the building, the BCS report. Um, it's been a while. Things got sidetracked because I actually have a life outside of this, the, you know, school board, which is strange to believe, but, um, there's a whole lot of stuff going on in the district that I've still also been involved in. So, but it is underway. It's coming. It's not going to just fall by the wayside. So I just want to let you all know. It's still happening.
I just want to add though that, um, if you look in the room here, all the art you see in the room is from Mount Vernon High School. So we want to commend them, you know, for all the art there. And on the outside, you have the Honor Academy. So it's just a matter of way that we have to display our students' art, that we can see it all over the buildings a little bit better. So, um, I just don't want anybody to believe that, you know, the, the art is not going on in there. It's just a way of how to, how we're going to display it. But I have to give them kudos because these are the kids' work from Mount Vernon High School. I just want to say that.
Thank you.
Um, I'm sorry, President, uh, we forgot the Wellness Committee.
So who's going to do it?
I, I, hold on. Before you, before I, before you take over really quick, I just want to make, make a comment about something that I recently was involved in. You know, um, our communication, our camera person, Mike Thompson, got me involved in, uh, something that's very important regarding our, some equipment and some space that we really could be using for broadcasting, communication, things like that. It's a lot of antiquated equipment and antiquated space that needs to be rejuvenated. There's money available to us. We can get a hold of it, but we do have to press because there's a lot of people and demographics that are not being reached because we have not utilized those, those equipment, those spaces. There's so much that's just not being, being done and we're not meeting a lot of goals that we could because of that space, that, that antiquated equipment and those dollars and no momentum. So, uh, I know that, uh, I invited, uh, Trustee Miller to be on the call. We did have one call. Um, but it's, I just want to say that, keep your ears open for it because you should expect to see us make movement going forward, okay? That's it.
Yeah.
Yes, this is at the high school.
This is, this is the Cable Commission.
Yeah. And I just think, I, I went in there.
So I, that, that was what I was talking about earlier when I went in there and I observed what's going on. And so one, one of the main things is for us to remember is that we are, to prepare children for things that are five years away or 10 years away. Um, uh, you, my phone number is a 240 area code because I, I taught in Maryland for one year. And every morning, the students did the, they did the news and they broadcasted the news. That was 20 years ago. So every morning, the students were in charge, it's an elementary school. They were in charge of going to the green room. They did the news. They talked about basketball. They talked about various things that were going on. They worked the equipment. And, uh, the principals seldom did any reports or any, uh, or anything of that nature because the students were the ones who took that helm. And so when we are putting in our schools Promethean boards, not smart boards because those are antiquated, but Promethean boards and touchscreens and things of that nature, we have to make sure that we are gearing our children up to go to another level, which is one of the things in, in, it wasn't technology at, um, at Doggett School, but it was horticulture, which is a hell of a lot of money, uh, a, a great career to have. So we have to just make sure that we take heed of that and looking at that. So, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, is that, does that conclude committee reports?
Wellness, Wellness Committee.
Oh, you have a Wellness Committee?
Yeah, Wellness Committee.
I'm sorry.
Um, which...
The ladies are like hiding since I put them on the spotlight the last time. And I'm going to put them on the spotlight again. Come on! They're like, you did it to me. You're not going to do it to me again.
All right, we don't mind when it's fun stuff. So we are preparing. We are well underway for our health fair. So it is our Fall Into Wellness Hour. Super, super exciting. It is going to be next Saturday, um, that is May 14th. It's going to be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We have so much wonderful stuff planned. It's incredible. We have Mount Vernon Health Center coming. They're going to do pressure, pressure, uh, monitoring. They're going to do a nutritional program. We have our food pantry coming. We have affordable health insurance representatives. We're going to have Zumba. We are going to have field games. We're going to have our Mount Vernon Basics Early Literacy Program. We're going to have face painting, a magic show, T-shirt making, a tumble bus, DJ, music sing-along. Um, again, we're going to have, um, representatives from the district speaking about mental health. We're going to have, uh, representatives from our new parent resource center. We're going to have our calendars available. We're going to have district information available. And most important, we're going to bring our community together. We're going to have fun and we're going to enjoy some beautiful day to get, together and, um, really recognize what it is to embrace wellness within our community and have a really great day. Our rain day is the 21st, but right now it's looking like 79 degrees, so everybody, please pray.
So, so is this Saturday? Is this Saturday?
Not this Saturday, May, May 14th. So not this Saturday, the following Saturday.
From what time? From 10:00 to 2:00.
From 10:00 to 2:00.
And it's going to happen here at Homes?
It's going to be at homeschool. That's correct.
At the Honor Academy.
At the Honor Academy. Thank you. Outside of Homes, by the way, it's going to be outside. We're not going to put you guys to sweat to the oldies inside the classroom. It's going to be outside. We're going, everything's happening outside. And the ladies have done an amazing, amazing work, ladies. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. You guys are incredible. I have no words to express how amazing you guys are.
Well, thank you. So, uh, does that conclude the committee report?
Yes.
That was great. That was great. So we're going to move right along, moving right along. Um, follow up one old business. Any follow up? I just have a question about the audit, the facilities audit. Do we have that, uh, status on that? I'll follow. Okay, so we can go to Human Resources?
Okay, um, 6.1. I have a, please have a motion, a second to approve Human Resources Memorandum 58A and 58B. Any concerns or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, uh, six, resolution, uh, 6.2. Approval to adopt the title Director of Business and Grants. May I have the resul- um, recommendation and a second, please?
Motion.
This is, any comments or concerns, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Uh, Resolution 6.3. Authorization to employment agreement with Marlon Stevenson as Director of Business and Grants. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any comments, concerns? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Resolution, uh, 6.4. Motion to authorize employment agreement with Nabil Botros as Facilities Director III. Oh, yeah.
Motion.
Can I have a second for Mr. Botros?
Second.
Darcy. Okay, uh, comments or concerns? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Resolution, what, um, we go to School Improvement, 7.1. I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion.
Okay, comments, concerns?
So excited about this.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think I have to ask about abstaining either. Okay. Uh, we're now to the Business Office, uh, 8.1. We present, acknowledge presentation of the Report of Examination of the Mount Vernon City School District Procurement of Natural Gas. This is from, uh, 2018. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, comments?
Can you explain this, this resolution? Just explain it, what it is.
So the audit from, uh, 2018, uh, which I spoke about in the slide earlier, talks about the procurement of natural gas. That audit was presented to the board. The entire packet was presented to the board. And this is just acknowledging that the board received the report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Resolution 8.2, To Approve the Corrective Action Plan for the 2018 Natural Gas Audit, you've all received the corrective action plan, it's also on the agenda, can I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Okay, comments?
Question, so just so I'm understanding, this is not money going out, this is money coming in, correct?
This has nothing to do with money in that sense, this is a corrective action plan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
From 2018.
Wrong question. We're on eight, I'm on eight three, you're on eight two, never mind, sorry.
We'll get there in a minute, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? 8.3, so this is a, To Approve an Increase in the 21-22 Budget by $822,846 to Account for Insurance Proceeds, so the hurricane...
Well, hold on, let's do the motion.
Motion. And then you can... Motion. Second. Okay.
Questions?
Not yet, so this, so we received $822,000 from our insurance company from hurricane, from the hurricane, from the fall. The budget, when you receive money that is not part of our budget, the budget has to be changed, we have to increase the budget to accommodate the extra money, this $822,000 that we've received from the insurance company, so there's a revenue line in the existing budget that speaks to insurance recoveries, and then that same amount, $822,000, goes into the expense line to pay for the repairs, so it's $822,000 in, $822,000 out, and we'll be speaking further about that on the next resolution. All in fa, any comments?
That was very presumptuous, assuming we had no questions. Quickly, just to be clear, the amount of damage that we sustained from the storm was approximately a million dollars, right?
Yes.
And then, so the seven, or the eight plus the two, we're spending this money, it's not money that we're taking and it's going to the bank account?
Our expenses exceed the income because of the deductible.
Correct.
So this is money recovered, this is not all of the money recovered, this is the beginning of the money recovered, there'll still be more.
So it's making us whole?
Less the deductible.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct, but I think it's important to say that we're not getting $800,000 and we're just not, like the repairs have to be done, and our repairs do exceed the amount of money we're getting.
Right, in one case, the, the repairs were done, and that was a $627,000 bill for the cleanup, the repairs, and then there's another piece which is replacing the HVA syst, HVAC system in the records room at Mount Vernon High School, which was totally destroyed by the flood, and that work is underway, the balance of the work is completed, there's still other work that has not been built yet.
May I ask a silly question? If we know that these types of storms are going to be coming more often, and we know that the damage that the storm did, are we making arrangements to ensure that, I don't know, we're not putting stuff back where it was, so it's not gonna be flooded again? Are we, are we, I mean, what are we doing?
So if we were to speak of the, the records room, the major area of the high school that was damaged inside the building, that room is almost cleaned out now, it will then be, the shelves will be removed, the entire room will be disinfected, and some of this will go back, much of it is being digitized, the stuff that couldn't be saved or could go is gone, so there were some 1,500 cases that were in that room, some of them so damaged it just looked like milk instead of paper, and there's a, there's a, there has to be a cleanup and a disinfecting of the area once everything is empty, and that's in the same area where the HVAC system is being replaced.
Correct, but that's not addressing the question, the question is, we're paying to replace the HVAC system that got damaged from a storm, the expectation, and I think this is an expectation everyone should have, is that we are going to continue to have storms similar to the one we had, I mean, they keep saying 100-year storms, and we're getting them every three months, when during the...
The water cannot get into that room again, and that, that has been remediated already, that water came in from the ground floor going down into the basement, that can't happen, let me speak to the outside of the building, there's a, a very robust retaining wall, has been built where the retaining wall collapsed, there's also, in the front of the retaining wall, there's gravel, there's a, I can't, a retention pond has, has been built there, that's good too, has been built there to take excess water that comes there, but if you were talking about water coming down from the street, from California Road as it did at that time into the parking lot, there's not really no way to stop that, that part of it, but, but the retaining wall will, is robust, and that will not happen again in that area.
Okay.
So we need to vote, right?
A vote, all in favor?
Doing double duty, you know?
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, 8.4, this is to approve authorization to raise the per diem hourly rate for security staff from, per diem security from 15 to 18 dollars an hour.
Motion.
Motion. Second.
Put everybody down.
So I'll speak to this briefly, we, we have not been able to find and retain per diem security staff, meaning when we don't have a position filled, or when somebody is out for a long time, we try to get per diems, we are losing those per diems to surrounding districts, this will stem that and enable us to get sufficient help when we need it.
I have a question, how about the part-time security personnel that we have, have we offered them full-time employment?
Well, these are the per diems, so there's, the HR department deals with the, the per diems becoming full-time people as they apply for those positions as they open.
Because I know that, that I was told, there are several of our security members that have applied, and they have not yet received any answers.
So this goes to the question that I asked recently regarding the process, first, I mean, I think it's, it's important to know the amount of per diem guards that we've had that have been on our, on our, on our payroll for more than three years, and how many of the, right, everything, three and more, and how many of them have been asking and begging and damn near, excuse me, almost, pretty much pleading to be flipped full-time?
Yep.
And then how many of them have been, why is the process, what is the process? I, I, I'm, I'm really, I really need to know, so I'm asking that question, I know I'm, I've been, I've requested some info that Ms. Tigs is definitely helping me out with, and I appreciate that, Ms. Tigs, but as far as, I think it's a big flashlight needs to be shined on the process for, and the recognition, the understanding, that there is, we do have per diem guards who have been in our district working for many years, and just have not been given a full-time position, and I really want to know why, I want to understand why, because it's, it's really just not fair, you know, especially if, and, and, and if I walk in a building and a guard who's on per diem is telling me, hey, you know Mitch, I'm getting skipped over, I'm asking, I've been asking, and I'm getting skipped over, I'm seeing other people who've been here less time than me, and I get, I'm getting skipped over, the 15 to 18 dollars is one thing, I get, I'm beautiful, let's do it, we gotta do that, we're doing it now, but the bigger problem is, what is the process for making sure that not only are we keeping guards that are per diem here because of the money issue, but how do we ensure that the guards that are per diem are getting full-time because they deserve it and they work for it and they're serving our school buildings accordingly? That's the real question and issue I think that needs to be investigated.
But also, also the fact, like you said, people are being overseen, I also have had conversation with several of our security guards, and some of them have applied even for, which are going to move up in the ranks, you know, and they have, they're not, they're not, they're not being listened to, and I know there's one in particular in Mount Vernon High School, and she put her application in and everything a couple of months, like months ago.
Well, I think there's so many, I think we have slotted so many security guards, so we could only have, but so many, is what I believe, that's the process, right? And so as they move around, or retire, or whatever, I guess they fill it up, okay? So maybe with this new security company, they'll do an assessment, and we'll find out, maybe we need to hire more.
Okay, okay, well, that's true, well, before I hand it over to, to Marcy, I just want to say that this, this new company that is coming in after their evaluation, that might be an opportunity for us to hire more folks when they come in, or it might be an opportunity to decrease in one building, the amount of people in one building that can go over to the other building, so we're definitely gonna take a look into that, but Marcy, you want to talk about the process?
Sure, so the process is that all applicants, especially per diems, because although they work for us, they don't work for us differently than someone applying to move up in the ranks, applies on OLS, or even through the, whatever, you know, the internal posting, they're then interviewed, and then from the compact interviews, they select the candidate for that building that they wish. We were doing one process before, but even with B&amp;G, you will hear that we're moving all of those to building-based processes, where the principal and that compact committee from that school is beginning to interview. Where it may get a little tricky is, if I've been a per diem at Holmes for XYZ amount of time, and the vacancy is at Lincoln, when I interview, Mrs. Jones doesn't know about my years at Holmes, or she may not, you know, she, I, she may have a more recent per diem who's worked there that she's happy with, so it may, that may be part of it, but I do know, as Madam President Saunders said, we have hired this year, we had some vacancies for several different reasons, and all of the security officers that were hired were per diems in the district already, and so at this time, I think we only have, as of tonight, we have two vacancies, I think three vacancies district-wide, and one of them became available, I think, this evening, so it's not that we've been leaving positions vacant, so we can't fill a position that's not vacant, but they have been filled recently by per diem.
And, and, and really quick, and I think Ken Silver, you can probably speak to this, defense rounds just happened, we should have saw increases to the amount of security guards, because principals, I'm certain, might have, would have asked for more security guards in certain situations, did we see an increase in security guards being sent, being dependent, dependent on which principals requested them?
There was a nominal increase, if any, maybe one or two, possibly district-wide, I'll remind you, we have 27 guards at Mount Vernon High School, and we did do a study looking at the number of guards in each building, and that is still underway as to, as to whether those people need to be redeployed in a different way, but, and I did send you that, that look at how many people are in each building.
Yes, you did, and, and looking at that, realizing that we have buildings like, like STEAM and like Grimes, that, Grimes in particular, is a K-8 school, we have to look at our, I think we have to look at our buildings according to what the, what they're facing, that needs to be what's looked at, and that needs to be part of the process for deciding what buildings get more guards, we can't decide, well, you've only got this many students, so you only get this many guards, no, because if you got 250 students, and everybody knows how to act all the time, you can't say that you got 250 students at a different school, but 100, 75 of them are acting like, like it's free-for-all and crazy time all the time, and say, you guys only get two, three guards as well, can't work like that, and I want to say something else regarding applying and applications, people are applying, I keep hearing it, I keep hearing people are applying, and I'm not making shots, I'm not, I'm really not, I'm just telling you what I hear, and the truth, truth of the matter, I keep hearing people are applying, and people are saying, I don't hear anything, I haven't got a call since April, but it's now December, hey Mitch, I tried, I applied for that, is that position still open? Yeah, it's still open, what do you mean? So we have to, you know, there, there has to be some validity, or we have to, we have to, we have to, we have to tighten up, or there has to be some validity to just hearing the same thing again and again, but...
Well, maybe that process needs to be reviewed, how to do it.
Yeah, but, but I think...
As far as the security monitors, because they're district-wide, it's not like there are teachers that are in one building, so maybe that's something we could, maybe that's something we can reassess.
But I think if anyone applies for a job and doesn't get it, they should be notified.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They should be notified, a letter should be sent to them saying, you know...
Yeah, but it's not only, it's not only security, because same thing, no, 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 I understand, I understand one of that, but it's not only security, because also, like, we have the problem of our per diems, TAs, we have a shortage of TAs, and we have a serious number of, like, permanent subs, that's what they call themselves, you know, because they're constantly being called, so why not make them a permanent TA in these positions that they are covering, you know, so it's like, it's something that we have to look, we have to look at large.
I don't understand what you're saying.
No, we have subs, right, for us, as a teacher assistants.
Well, the subs are, are the subs somebody that's maybe retired, that may be called?
No, but hold on, no, 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 I'm just telling you for what I, for what I have...
What a sub is?
Yeah, a substitute, a substitute TA, so a lot of them may not be retired, a lot of them are just subs, you know, like, they, they, and they are still, they want a job, and they have applied for a job, but they're only called as subs, and they have, and I'm gonna give you an example, like in Pennington, in Pennington, we have several, we have several sub TAs that are there every single day.
Right, but that might be a position that has, is not an open position, the TA could be absent, the TA could be on leave or something, that's why you can't hire until...
In all due respect, guys, we're, we're getting really way off track.
Elmo.
I think this, this is an Elmo moment, enough, let's move on, and this is something clearly that we want our new superintendent to dive into, and I'm sure she will, thank you.
Sure she will.
Elmo, there you go, you gonna leave me like that? You're gonna leave me like that? Cheese.
Okay, on the per diem change in salary, hourly rate?
We did that.
We, we did not vote on that.
Oh, we didn't vote? Okay, no.
We didn't vote. We started a conversation, it all went downhill.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, the next one is 8.5, Resolution and Motion to Accept Federal and State Summer Food Service Program Funding and Adopt the Budget for the 22 Summer Food Service Program, this is just for the summer, the summer food is all paid from federal funds, can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
So who does the food?
The, the same company, Witzens, does the food for the summer, but is paid for from a different source, from federal funds through the Office of School Improvement, so it's not out of the general fund during the summer, this is, this is, has been this way for many years, the taxpayers here do not pay for the summer food service program.
I'm sorry.
Any other comments?
No, you had a motion, I think we need to...
We got that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? 8.6, to, motion and second to appoint Sandra Mike as Internal Claims Auditor at $90 an hour for an expected 20 hours per month from the period May 5th to June 30th of this year.
Motion. Motion.
Okay, second, so the, this position is appointed yearly, we are appointing Sandra Mike now to work with Kathy Kelly, who is the existing Internal Claims Auditor who is leaving June 30th, so by appointing Sandra Mike now, we allow for an overlap in this Internal Claims Auditor's role, and at the annual meeting in, in July, assuming she still wants the job and we want her, she will be reappointed for the next year, so right now we're only appointing through June 30th.
Where is her resume?
I'm missing a lot of attachments.
I, I have her resume, but I don't have it in this moment, she did work for the district for many years, in the business office, in several different capacities, you want to speak?
Ms. Mike was our accountant for many years before she left from here, when Don Arno was this Assistant Superintendent of Business, so she moved upstate, she lives in, her parents live in Mount Vernon, and she moved upstate, and now she retired, and she wants to come back and work for us.
So I'll show that resume.
But I do have her resume, so...
I think it needs to be attached.
I thought it was attached, apologies.
Do you have to attach it and then what? Okay.
You want to look it together? I can hold it, ready?
Yeah, like I can see them. Where were you on that?
We have the motion and second, I want to see if there's any comments, and then we'll vote.
Will this be attached?
It certainly will be.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, 8.7, Declare the Playgrounds at Columbus Park of Rebecca Turner, Trappagin, and Hamilton to be in emergency for repairs, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent for Business to make arrangements for repair and replacement required. Motion, please?
Motion.
Motion.
Okay, thank you.
So this is 8.7, and we're gonna appoint... So this is 8.7 and we're going to appoint Compound Playground? Is that the person, is that the company that's going to?
Let me speak to this. So Compound is procured through the state contract, through the Ed Data contract, which you guys approved a couple of weeks ago. Compound has been repairing our playgrounds for several years. In fact, they installed two of our playgrounds, which happen to be in good condition right now. So this resolution allows us to prepare for the repairs of these playgrounds during the summer using the next budget. These playgrounds are specifically mentioned in the next budget so that we can do a playground project and it will be aidable at our regular state aid rate. By doing this now, we are able to get started on planning for this. This has to go to the state and we want to have this completed by, by the end of the summer. And we have looked at these playgrounds, we've reviewed the inspections, you've seen, you've received all the inspections from me.
Got to ask you a question on it.
Sure. And so they are coming out to look at each one and give us a price to either repair, if possible, or replace completely, as trustee mentioned a little while ago. Yes, sir?
Yeah, so remember that, so when we mentioned earlier that we were at Trap, Ken, we looked at, Mr. Silver, we looked at the playground because this inspection condemned several playgrounds. These are the playgrounds?
Yes, sir.
But when we were walking Trappigan Playground, we couldn't seem to find anything that seemed to deem it dangerous.
Yes, sir. After you left, I then spoke to the playground company further and we looked, we took pictures and looked at them together at that moment. There's something called an entanglement of danger.
I remember you mentioned that.
Which means a kid could get stuck in something and could get harmed by that. And that was the problem that they had was entanglement. And, and the parts for this are not available any longer. That playground is, is maybe 30 years old. Now, there's another playground, a little on that, what was used for the football field a couple of years ago, that playground is fine. So when we say condemn or replace, like we looked at the other day at Rebecca Turner, it's not the entire, the entirety of the playgrounds that there. So at Rebecca Turner, there were two major pieces of equipment. One of those pieces of equipment needs to be replaced. The other one needs minor repairs and will be fine. So when we say condemn, we're not saying condemn everything on the property.
I just want to say, in case any of you don't realize, this is big, especially for a school like Parker, because if you haven't seen their playground, it's like Chernobyl or something. And this really, it's not in good shape. It's bad, it's really bad shape. I'm sorry if anybody here from Chernobyl has relatives from there, but it's really in bad shape. So this is a big win, number one, to just be here where we can be planning to get them the playground that those babies deserve, all right? So.
And trustee, the, the Parker Playground is not used. We did look at that together and it's, it's an afterword.
Chernobyl.
I want to say, I want to say thank you to, oh, sorry.
TJ.
Does, does that include the fence, the gate that?
Where are you now? At Rebecca Turner?
At Rebecca Turner, the gate that.
That, that gate is being repaired in the next, in the next week or two or replaced in the next week or two. That gate does not exist. That's not a part of repairing the playground. That's the fence company. We took a picture of it while you were there. They're going to be replacing that gate.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Silver for jumping on this. I really appreciate it and it's really important for our children to have safe play spaces in every building. So thank you, Mr. Silver, for getting on this right away.
Thank you. Okay, to the motion.
I'm sorry, really quickly, not in reference to this particular item, but you made a mention of items that were approved by the state vendors. I think it would behoove, not tonight, because it's already 8:42, but another, maybe next meeting for old business, if you can, we can review how those vendors are found and why it behooves us or benefits this district to use those types of vendors. So then that way, people could understand, because I think sometimes it's a quick, it looks like it's a quick decision for us where we're using a company, a particular company to do something, but it actually benefits us because then we don't have to go out for the RFP and we don't have to pay for all of those, you know, processes to find a vendor. So it's just something.
Yes, and we are allowed to use, we also approved, I think, at the last meeting, the BOSI's list for, for bids as well. So we have the state, we have BOSI's and we're allowed to attach to any public entity in the state of New York that has something called a piggyback provision, that we can get on to that.
Next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So where are you with that?
We're on the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I vote twice?
Opposed? Yes.
I'd like to vote aye twice.
Aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Next is approve the boys varsity football team to travel to Rutgers University in Piscataway. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Okay, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Next one, 8.9, approve boys varsity team travel to UConn in stores, Connecticut to compete in football camp. Motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Okay, comments on this? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, last one of these is the approve boys varsity basketball team to go to Oahu to compete in the Lani Classic. This is, this is in December. I don't think that's listed here, but that's when it is. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Where, where are all the girls' sports?
Yeah.
You took the worst out of my mom.
There were three in a row, all boys. I'm just wondering when the girls are going to.
Go to Hawaii.
And do they need chaperones, perchance?
I volunteer.
Let's stay on the motion, guys.
No, but it's a concern. I don't, I don't like seeing one-sided sets of any type of agenda items and not seeing a match on the other side. Not only are we legally obligated to do so, but it's also a moral imperative.
I understand. Let's speak to the director of.
Talk to coach.
We'll talk to Coach Semino.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so where are we with that?
We need a vote on that, please?
I have another question. Are they going to do any kind of fundraisers?
They do, they do fundraisers.
They do this every year.
They do it every year. They go to Hawaii maybe every three years or so.
Yes, last, last year, they were in Florida.
Yes, but I need to say the fundraiser doesn't apply to what the district has to pay. The fundraiser is for when they buy the tickets to go to historical sites and all of that stuff.
So it's for travel in Hawaii?
Yes.
So the district is paid for the travel and their fundraisers are for the extracurriculars? Excursions. Excursions, okay.
And the chaperones. I think some of the coaches.
Oh, no, no.
No, no, no.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, next one is authorization to declare computer network equipment unusable and obsolete for the purpose to discard it.
Motion.
Motion?
Where's that at? Where?
811.
No, no, no. Where, where are those?
Where's the equipment?
Computer slash network equipment?
That equipment, I believe, is, is located at the high school. Well, it's, it's brought from various schools to the high school and then they determine that it's either usable, reusable, or that's, that's, can't be sold.
Okay.
I didn't hear a second on that, sorry.
Second.
Have you guys tried in, to find out organizations that might take it to an underdeveloped country?
My understanding is that this equipment is not usable.
Might be not usable, it might not be usable here, but it's definitely usable in underdeveloped countries.
No, we can't, we can't give the equipment.
Oh, we can? Okay. Okey-dokey pokey.
Okay, to the motion, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Sad aye.
Abstain? Okay, next, 812, second, motion and second to approve tri-turf for athletic fields maintenance for the period April 1st, 22 to March 31st, 23. Motion, please?
Tri-turf, what?
Motion, please?
Motion. Second.
So explain.
Yes, I will, I will, I will. So, tri-turf is also part of the, the Ed Data bids, bid package. Tri-turf does, you have this in your package, but they, they have heavy equipment. One of the things they have to do is to regrade the mile-long walking path that we have on a regular basis. Another thing they have to do is to adjust and the 40-foot of fencing, of netting that is in the area at the athletic fields. They have to have.
At the high school?
Yes, they have, all the workers at the high school. They have booms that have to go up to adjust this netting 40 feet. Heavy equipment to regrade things. They also start and stop and maintain the sprinkler system, which is an industrial sprinkler system. They maintain all the controls for the sprinkler system. They also do all the flowers and planting at the, at the high school. You've, I'll just read a few more things if you, if you don't have this handy.
Well, it's attached.
It's attached, okay?
But the question I have is, you know, some of the stuff is, could be handled by our.
Thank you, say it.
By our grounds people. You know, flower bedding, you said, that can be handled by.
Don't we use Picture Perfect for the flower bedding? Is that not?
Picture Perfect landscaping is used in some, in some areas, but they are not, they didn't bid on anything.
Okay, got it.
That was the problem. They, we had no bidders for landscaping.
Okay.
It was, they received the bid. We have proof that they received the bid. They chose not to, not to bid.
So why isn't our grounds, buildings and grounds personnel able to take care of some of this stuff?
We don't have the equipment.
We don't have any heavy equipment at all. We can't get up high on anything. We do, we cut the grass, we do the weeding.
You know, like the flower planting and all that stuff, like the simple stuff.
They do do some of that work at, at all of the schools, but our, our, our maintenance, our grounds crew are not, they're not landscapers.
Okay.
And so even, even in this building, we use an outside landscaper company to maintain the sprinkler system and, and the planting as well.
My only, my only, my only other concern, I'm sorry, you said something? Oh, my only other concern is the statement that says all clippings are to remain on site. We visited schools and we've seen across the district, not just clippings, but just lack of grounds keeping as far as, for instance, Grimes. I don't know if you came with me, Mike, when, when Mike Leach was with me, he came with me. We looked at the entire grass area between where Grimes ends in the annex building, there's a huge grass space, green space over there. It was overgrown. It looked like sleet stacks lived there. If you don't know what sleet stacks are, it's because you're too young, but it's okay. But my thing is, okay, it looked, it looked awful. So my question is, I just want you to notice this concern is, are our grounds teams going to be able to handle the clippings and things like that when we're already facing challenges that they're not able to handle?
So we do know that, that area at Trappigan was used as a place where they brought all the clippings and threw them on the ground. That's over. That's not happening again. We are trying, we are working with the head of the grounds crew and Matt, our maintenance foreman, to find other ways of doing this rather than dumping it at Trappigan. So that's over and that cleanup was, was well worth it and for our eyes to be opened from that. It's, it's hard to find place for that much stuff all the time and to, to have dumpsters on our property all the time to put that in is pretty expensive. So we are working to find a solution. We're hoping our new facilities director will help us as well.
I have a question. Is this, from my understanding, where, this is only at the high school?
Yes.
So the $180,000 that we are paying, is that budgeted in?
Yes, but, I'm sorry.
And it's anticipated that this is an annual fee that we will incur every year?
This is the second year we're doing it.
Just to have it, yeah, but is it an annual, is, is, do we do the same exact amount of work every year? Or is it cyclical or is there something?
We, well, of course, it's cyclical, having to do with the winter months and so on, but we do the same amount of work every year and this, this year, it's $5,000 less. I also want to mention the, the timing of this motion. This fits with the Ed Data, so we, we have to stay within the Ed Data timeframe. That's why it doesn't go June, July to June. That's why it has this, this March 30th. And they've already begun work, hoping that this would be passed.
Do you mind explaining what is the Ed Data for all of us out there? They have no idea what it is.
So several weeks ago, the board approved a resolution to adopt Ed Data. Ed Data is one of the websites that people, companies bid on throughout, throughout New York State. Actually, there could be any, they don't have to be in New York State. But they bid on this and the low bidder, lowest responsible bidder, is who we try to choose each time. There could be a reason not to choose that low responsible bidder. If they didn't provide the exact services that we need, we could go to the next person on the list. So we also have that with BOSI's, where we have that same bidding process or with our own RFPs or bids, which cost money, as was pointed out earlier, and we don't have to do that.
Thank you. It was more for, you know, our, the people that are listening on Facebook Live, they might have no idea what is that.
So where are we now?
On the motion to vote, please, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, abstain. Next is 813.
Motion.
This is a budget transfer of.
Well, you have to motion. Eight motions.
A motion, like Darcy, a motion, second?
Second.
Okay, so this budget transfer, it's a single budget transfer that takes the money from our insurance deductibles and puts it into the budget code where we pay the bills. So this is our deductible from the flood, which I said we were going to talk about this later. So we have the money from the flood in one place, in revenue, and now we have the money to spend in another place and this is a deductible that brings us, makes us whole. So we have a $500,000 budget line for deductibles for insurance and this 200 and some thousand dollars is going into to complete the repairs. So it's just a transfer from where it has to stay until it's needed for deductibles. If something, if something else occurred, we would continue to use the deductibles. Last year, we only used 25,000 of this half a million dollars deductible. This year, we are using this now big chunk because of the flood. Okay, any comments after that?
I think you gave us too much information. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is 814, authorization to pay Bronxville Schools.
Second.
I didn't hear the first. Darcy, Adrian.
Why? Why?
Yeah, so, we have, we have a number of properties that are on the border of Bronxville and, and Mount Vernon, and to the extent that the, the owners of these properties, you choose the Bronxville Schools, we have to pay the portion of the school tax paid to Mount Vernon to the Bronxville Schools. There is, I believe, $211,000 that we have to pay for, you've received the list of, of those people, where the border properties are, and they're only allowed, maybe too much information, but they're only allowed to do this once during the time they own the property. So when they buy the property, they have to make a decision about where the kids will go to school, and it stays that way for the time they own the property. Yes?
I still ask why.
It's a state law.
It's because, it's a state law, and because in Westchester, there's a ton of properties, including mine, that have a certain portion of it, my driveway and my garden are in Eastchester. I have to pay taxes to Eastchester, and if I were to sell my house, I would have a choice, the, the, the new owner would have a choice of sending their children to either Eastchester Schools or Mount Vernon Schools, because we are taxpayers. But it's a, it, it doesn't matter. It's just my driveway and my vegetable garden and my, my garage.
I'm glad you said that.
So anyway, this is a real thing. It happens all the time, and that's why we have to do it.
Thank you, Darcy.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do we have a choice?
No, no. Abstain?
Still why?
Still why?
Yeah, we still have why. Next.
Uh, motion and second to approve Student Services Memorandum 19. That's 9.1.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Comments?
You go to both city council meetings?
Anybody have a comment? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. 10.1, to pay the county of Westchester for the removal, renewal of one oil tank registration at Trappigan School for $730. Motion?
Um, motion. Because you...
I need a motion first.
Motion. Can you put, can you put a decimal point and after that, 730?
I sure can.
Yeah, I got a question. I thought we were...
I don't have a second yet, please?
Second.
Okay. I just want to comment on this first, please. So we are removing 11 oil tanks in 10 schools. This is a budgeted item in next year, a capital project which will be adable by the state. 10 of the oil tanks have a renewal date of June 30th. One of them has already expired, the one at Trappigan. And according to the county of Westchester, doesn't matter whether you're planning to take them out, if it's expired, it has to be renewed, and that's what we're doing here, even though it's coming out, and this will be a state-aided project, which will be hopefully during the summer.
So you had a motion?
We're ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? And we have 11.1, who's a settlement with an employee. That's all I have on that. A motion, please?
Motion. Second.
No attachments.
No attachments. There are.
No attachment, and we discussed this previously.
There are two attachments.
Yes. Are you logged in?
Anything else? Any other questions?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Um, I have to, I have to see, oh.
Oh, sorry. My bad. I took my, my thing back.
Okay. Authorization for a leave of absence for Dr. Hamilton. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Third.
Okay. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, now's the big one.
Now's the big one.
Uh-uh.
Should I, should I make this, should I make this statement first?
Da-da-da, da-da-da, da-da-da.
Let's do the, let's do the vote. Okay. Drum roll. Here we go.
Okay. Resolution...
We gotta do both of them. We gotta do both.
Motion is second for the appointment of Dr. Wavlin Bennett Conroy as acting superintendent of schools effective immediately and continuing through June 30th.
Motion. Second. Second, second, second.
Okay.
I have some questions, don't...
Get a resume.
Is it attached?
Yeah, where's her resume? Where are her presentations? Okay. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, now the really big one.
Yep.
Appointment of Dr. Wavlin Bennett Conroy, superintendent of schools effective July 1st for a term of three years through June 30th, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Third.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Woo-hoo. Yeah. Yes. Speech. Speech, 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 speech. Let me get this speech.
She got it.
Oh, I got it. Wait, what? Just, just put it right there. She's supposed to read this. She's gonna be stalking. I was supposed to read that before, but...
Gail with the flowers. They're as big as you are, Gail.
Why don't you start here?
Gail, I love those flowers. Nice.
Just get a mic and speak. What? This, no, I, I was waiting, because I was gonna read that, because we have other business to follow.
Aww. Hugs all around. Congratulations.
I want to say something to congratulate Dr. BC. Having served this community for a number of years on the board, I can say that in my experience, nothing quite compares to the challenges of being a school administrator and especially being a superintendent. That's because administrative leadership is extremely difficult work. It frequently, it frequently means identifying uncomfortable issues, asking people to live up to their words, or facing up to frustrating realities. And this is not only for the, and that's not, I'm sorry, and that's not easy for most people to do, even the best professionals. However, we are confident that Dr. Bennett Conroy, our new superintendent of schools, is well-equipped for the challenges of the superintendency and the demands of Mount Vernon. As many of you know, Dr. Bennett Conroy has spent the last 21 years of her career in a variety of key administrative positions in our district, from teacher to principal and now, and now assistant superintendent. She has served as acting superintendent of schools. Dr. Bennett Conroy has really touched almost all aspects of school district operations. It's an impressive array of experiences and talents. She brings fresh perspectives, new ideas, and an urgency to build on our successes, but more importantly, firmly addresses the issues that stand in our way. BC, we welcome you to the position and look forward to our shared success. Ladies and gentlemen, please congratulate, help me congratulate Dr. Bennett Conroy. Good evening. As you know, my name is Wavlin Bennett Conroy, and I have been in education for 42 years. Please don't calculate my age.
I did.
I joined the Mount Vernon family in 2001, which means I have been a part of this family for 21 years. I started in Mount Vernon High School as a Spanish teacher, then I became the head of the language department, interim principal of Mount Vernon High School, director of PPS, interim superintendent, assistant superintendent of school improvement, and now, finally, your superintendent. As you can see, I have worn many hats over the years and worked extremely hard to get to this point in my career. These experiences make me the perfect person for this new role. I know this district very well, many of its successes, and also many of its failures. During my tenure, I intend to properly address our, our areas of concern while also celebrating the things we do well. To the students, you will have a safe learning environment. You will be heard. We will take steps to provide you the skills needed to go to college or even to get a job. You will have the opportunity to participate in sports and have more club options, to name a few things. To the families, you will be better informed, given more opportunities to volunteer, given the platform to express your thoughts, which will be truly heard. You will have more workshops to improve your skill set and be able to better assist your young ones. To the staff, you will have the resources you need, clear expectations and guidance to achieve those expectations, relevant professional development, and my complete admiration and thanks for each hard-working custodian, secretary, security, support staff, and all educators. To the community, we will create unique partnerships with various city departments, community-based organizations, and local businesses. We intend to lean on your expertise to enhance the services to our students and their families. They may take the form of internships and create in safe environments for them to go to when they are not with us in school. To the board of trustees, thank you for placing your trust in me, and I look forward to sharing my insight and vision with you and implementing your policies to the best of my abilities. And to my family, thank you for your support. You are my ninjas. You're always here, but never seen. I have more, I have, I do have more things to speak on, but that will take place over the coming weeks. As for tonight, I would like to thank you for placing your trust in me, and I look forward to working with you to change the narrative and bring back pride to the Knights. Thank you, thank you, sir. So we still have a couple of more resolutions, guys, unfortunately. I didn't put this together. Somebody else did.
Okay. Resolution 12.1, authorization to refuse placement on the May election ballot for library trustee candidate. A motion, please?
Motion. Second.
I'll tell you as soon as we get a motion.
Second.
So this, this relates, this is regarding a person who is on the library board, whose term on the library board does not expire for well over another year. This person is trying to run on, for the board while this person is already on the board, and legal counsel has said that they cannot do that, and we have the right to refuse to put that person on the ballot because, you can read the resolution itself, that is an improper thing for, for that person to be doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we had a motion?
We have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We have 12-2 and 12-3, minutes of March 15th and March 30th.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Abstain.
Um, I guess I need to separate them if you're abstaining. Let's do March 15th first.
Yeah, for March 15th, I'm abstaining. I was in Belize, Central America.
Oh, rub it in. Rub it in. Come on.
Okay. And March 30th?
Second.
I need a, a motion, please?
Motion. Second.
Okay. All in favor, please?
Aye.
Abstain? Opposed? Okay. So I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss a particular person or persons. Motion, please?
Motion. Second.
And now we're coming back?
Um, we are not coming back in perhaps 10 minutes, 15 minutes.
I love it.
I did, I, I need a vote on that, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Have a good night. Thank you. Good night.